I call the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. We will all stand for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
Melanie Martin is now joining.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Ask for the roll call.
Commissioner Martin?
Present.
Commissioner Patillo? Commissioner or Vice Chair Hassett?
Present.
Chairperson Gillette?
Here.
Commissioner Morris? Commissioner Helms?
Here.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll now have the automatic announcement.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour, per the chairman's discretion.
Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with a recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, March fourth, twenty twenty-four, at nine thirty a.m. in this same location, with the exception of any continued items. Has everyone read the minutes from the January tenth meeting? Then I will accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Helms. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Hail.
So moved. The January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission minutes will be reviewed at the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Item number one, Peggy Clements.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number four zero two five nine one five zero from an AR agricultural residential zone to an R one single-family residential zone to bring the property into compliance in the Beaver Dam vicinity. One letter of support has been received. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant present and do you wish to speak?
Yeah.
You wish to speak? Please give your name and your address.
Darryl Garlic at seven eighty-five Mimosa, Beaver Dam, Arizona. Just a notice on that map, these parcels are one parcel but have county roads that dissect the three individual quarter acre parcels, basically make them unusable in an agriculture residential status. That's why I'm petitioning to have a R one zoning change to those parcels so that they are actually usable in a quarter acre size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, do we don't have any requests to speak on this item?
No.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move the, we approve item number two with staff recommendations.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bradshaw, seconded by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye.
Chair Gillette, I don't know if it's important. It's me, Peggy Clements. However, Commissioner Bradshaw said it was item number two. It's item number one.
Oh, that is important. Item number one.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, and thank you for being so right on it. Okay, so we're back to, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved. We move on to item number two.
Item, item number two is an evaluation of a request for rescission of Board of Supervisors resolutions two zero one six dash one 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 and two zero one eight dash one three three to revert the zoning from an M two general manufacturing zone back to an AR agricultural residential zone for Assessor's parcel number four zero two three three one three three for not meeting the conditions of approval in the Beaver Dam vicinity. Staff has received one letter from the water company that owns the property. Staff recommends that resolutions two zero one six dash one 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 and two zero one eight dash one three three be rescinded.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant present and do you wish to speak? Hearing no one. Do we have anybody on this? No. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Do any of the commissioners have any questions at this time? Then I'll ask for a motion.
So I don't have, excuse me, I don't have any questions particularly, but I do see that this has been extended several times. It is my, I'm of the opinion that, you know, if these things are taking this long to get done, if there's other options, I think that these recensions are important for people to have to move their projects forward. So I move that we rescind Board of Resolution number two sixteen one 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 and twenty eighteen one three three.
I'll say again.
Can you speak louder?
Yes, excuse me.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bradshaw, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Item number three, Alex Bolin.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number three zero six one five zero four six A and three zero six one five zero four six B to allow for an RV park in an AR agricultural residential zone in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak?
Yes.
Come to the podium. Give your name and your address.
My name is Amy Fonger. I live at six twenty-four South Glen Canyon, Golden Valley, Arizona. We wish to do this RV park only for us. It's not for the public. It is, we, we're from Montana and another couple from North Dakota. We come down only for a few months a year, and there's one person that stays there all year. We have sold our houses here, one being here for thirty years and me being here for twelve, because of the crime that goes on here. The people from thirty years, that been here for thirty years, have been robbed four times. There's really no law enforcement in Golden Valley. So we have our RVs right there to be protected, but there's two RVs on each property. It's very clean, and we're trying to do everything right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of this applicant?
I do have, maybe not of the applicant, but maybe staff. So if we, if we do get this, if we do approve this, what's the possibility that this moves forward to become an actual RV park?
There are a chance. It will never become a RV. So I was asking the staff about how that, how that could work if you sold the prop, no, no, so if you sold the property.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bradshaw, the, so what the item is today is it's allowing for an RV park, which could be a commercial, it could be private. They do have to meet all of our commercial standards, even though it is, it is private, so they're going to have to submit a site plan, which will require that they meet all of our section and the zoning ordinance relating to RV parks, even if it is only four spaces or two spaces, they will have to meet those standards. If the property ever does sell, then the new owner would be able to use it as a commercial RV park, but it would also be to the standards of that commercial RV park because they have to go through the site plan review and the permitting process as if it is a commercial RV park.
Okay, I don't remember if I closed the public hearing. Oh, no, I do, I can't. Hang on a second. All right, I have a Joe Wheaton that wishes to speak on this, and I also have a Scott Varville, and I would like for you guys to line up here and, and speak. We'll need your name and your address.
Is this what I'm supposed to do?
Your name and your address, please.
My name's Joe Wheaton, and I live at five oh eight South San Pedro Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. Okay, and I oppose the request for the special use permit for the said property at six twenty-four South Glen Canyon Road to be used for RV park and for seasonal residency for several reasons. We already have lots of RV parks in Golden Valley for seasonal and full-time RVers. We don't want an RV park in the area proposed because there are very nice homes just blocks away from this area, already built, and some of us landowners may build our own homes close by. I feel by allowing seasonal usage, we'll eventually turn into full-time RVers, and that would bring a lot of issues for the people living in their beautiful homes. Examples, lots of stuff piling up around the RVs, then they would be making lean-tos, abandoned cars, animals running loose, garbage piling up, et cetera, et cetera. If they need a seasonal RV parking, go to an RV park and rent one, is how we feel about it.
Thank you. Your name and your address, please.
I'm Scott Barville, thirty-four eighty-five Ranch Road. When I signed in, I was told that the item that I wished to speak to, which is the Sohi airstrip setup, she said it was item three. Indeed, I guess it is not, but that other item is what I wished to speak on.
Thank you. I'll call you up for that.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commissioners have anything they wish to say? Then I'll call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item three with the restriction of four RVs.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. Item number four A, staff report by Peggy Clements.
Item four A is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel numbers three one seven four five zero zero five A and three one seven four five zero zero five B from an A general zone to a C two four A general commercial four acre minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant present and do you wish to speak?
Okay, my name is Julio Sanchez. I'm coming from Spanish Fort Utah.
Your address?
It's one five zero three south, two eight five zero east, Spanish Fort Utah, A four six six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm coming for, I'm staying in this country for forty years, in this beautiful country. I'm thing moved from Utah in this area, so I need, please give me the opportunity for making it my business and my goal. Almost I make it fifty-three years old. I'm working hard, so it's time for me. Please give me the opportunity for my dream.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and coming everyone.
Thank you. I have anybody else on this one? I'm going to close the public hearing. And do the commissioners have any questions at this time?
I do.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
So how many RVs do you plan on putting on this property?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I believe this item is just for the rezone to bring it into compliance because currently it's not in compliance. The next item is for, I believe, the RV, the RV park.
All right, so I jumped ahead.
Okay. Then I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve item four A as presented.
I'll say again.
I have a motion by Commissioner Helms, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I think she's eyeing on the I part.
Yes.
Item number four B, staff report by Peggy Clements.
Item four B is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit of Assessor's parcel number three one seven four five zero zero five A and three one seven four five zero zero five B to allow for an RV park in a C two four A general commercial four acre minimum lot size zone in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant present and do you wish to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the commissioners for a motion.
Well, so now I'll ask my question. How many, how many RVs are?
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Gillette. How many RVs are intended to be on these parcels?
I'm starting, I'm thinking, I'm starting maybe eight.
Sir, please give your name and your address again.
Okay, my name is Julio Sanchez. I'm coming, my address is one five zero three south, two eight five zero east, Spanish Fort Utah, A four six six zero. I'm thinking I started as possible maybe eight or seven.
He wants to know how many RV?
That was the answer.
Yeah, eight, eight or, yeah, seven or eight.
Eight. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve item four B as presented with no further restrictions.
I need a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Helms, a second by Commissioner Hassett. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number five, staff report by Alex Bolin.
Item five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number three five three zero nine zero five zero from an AR ten A agricultural residential ten acre minimum lot size zone to a CRE ten A commercial recreation ten acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a campground in the Kingman vicinity. Staff has received nine letters of opposition, a petition with twenty-one signatures in opposition, and fifteen letters of support. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here and do you wish to speak?
My name is Nathaniel Elijah Gramalski, fifteen two one eight East faculty Springs Road, Kingman, Arizona. Honorable Chair, distinguished members of the Commission, public servants, thank you for your diligent service. We are honored and privileged to participate in this process. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody here. I believe it's auspicious that we are meeting on Valentine's Day, and we are here in the spirit of love. I'm reminded of the Gospel of Matthew in the twenty-second chapter where we are commanded to love one of, to love our neighbors and that that's the greatest commandment, and we are very sad that we are meeting many of our neighbors here today under this condition, but we are happy to answer any questions that the board might have, abide by any recommendations, and, and to continue the neighborly love that we enjoy with our neighbors.
Hi, my name is Chase Spillman. I live at fifteen two eighteen East faculty Springs Road. I'm an owner-operator at Arcadian American Farms. I would like to start by thanking the staff members in the various offices of the county, which have been so helpful during this process, whose recommendations for a rezone have brought us here today. After careful consideration of the letters of opposition, and with desire to alleviate the general concerns of our neighbors, we are happy to cooperate with any stipulation that the board recommends and abide by any recommendations of the staff in order to address each issue which has been raised by our neighbors. The campground we seek to establish is small in nature with minimal environmental impact. Arcadian American Farms seeks to posture itself as a neighborhood farm to ensure the welfare of the residents of Silver Springs in times of hardship, and we are happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you for your time and consideration. God bless you and all of our neighbors.
Thank you. I have several people who want to speak on this item. Mary Redenti, followed by Donovan Guerera. Please stand in the aisle so that we don't have to wait for you to come from behind. Mary?
Thank you. My name is Mary Redente. My address is nine fourteen West Glendale Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona. I'm also a part-time resident in Mojave County and an investor in Arcadian American Farms. And I am here today to read a letter from one of the neighbors on Silver Springs who was not able to be in attendance, but I think what she had to say was very important to share. So I'm going to read this letter from her. I am writing today to support my neighbors Chase Spillman and the folks at the Arcadian American Farms. They have been very excellent neighbors in my experience and have gone above and beyond to help me with two fires on my property. They in fact came and saved my home during one particularly harrowing fire when the fire department did not make it out until they had already put out the fire. They have been honest and helpful and have always kept their word in any dealings we have had. I trust they will honor the parameters of what they commit to in terms of trying to lessen the impact on the larger community. My parcel is also not directly bordered by this lot, so I cannot speak to the impact it will have on its direct neighbors, but that would be for them to work out. Sincerely, Debbie Baskin, Doctor of Chiropractic Medicine. Thank you.
Thank you. Donovan Guerera.
Hello, my name is Donovan Guerra, and I reside at fifteen two one eight East faculty Springs Road. I am the director of our high-density microgreens operation at Arcadian American Farms. I wanted to address a few ways that Arcadian American Farms campground will be a benefit to Mojave County in accordance with the general plan. Mojave County has recognized a strength of economic development through tourism and has listed a desire to add new types of attractions that emphasize the natural resources of the land and rural character of the surrounding area. This is exactly in line with our campground, as we will be promoting the quiet character of a rural farm in the heart of the Mojave Desert. Kids, adults, locals, and tourists have thoroughly enjoyed the animals, nature, and the community we love to provide. Furthermore, the proposed development of a campsite will serve as a benefit to our neighborhood, in that we are willing to volunteer and donate our resources towards the upkeep of roads and improvements towards the community, including but not limited to manual labor, Silver Springs highway trash cleanup, emergency preparedness, and fire response in accordance, cooperation, and compliance with the county at all times. We believe that the opportunity to host others and represent Mojave County in the best light is a great honor. We want to invite other families to experience the serenity of the Mojave Desert while providing value to locals through community upkeep and economic development opportunities. Those who want to enjoy peace and quiet will continue doing so. After all, this is a quality which our guests seek as well. Meanwhile, the many others of the Silver Springs community which have expressed great optimism in the idea of a neighborhood farm will continue to enjoy its benefits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susanna Ramirez, and followed by Chase Spillman.
My name is Susanna Ramirez, and I reside on fifteen two eighteen East faculty Springs Road. I am an owner and operator of Arcadian American Farms. I am a mother of a son who was born on Silver Springs Road, whose grandparents also live on Silver Springs. Three generations of my family have invested their livelihood here. We understand that you too have invested your livelihood here. We understand the importance of maintaining the integrity, the dynamic of our community. We are moved to see how many families there are which care about the affairs of this community. We are happy to see- are which care about the affairs of this community. We are happy to see so many of our neighbors together in the same place for the first time and regret that it is here in a courthouse and not over our dining tables. Nevertheless, we believe that this is an opportunity for all of us to come together and establish deeper bonds of trust and neighborly love. I believe our neighborhood can be a space where everyone's needs can be met, a space where fellowship with neighbors forge friendships which become family. Whether we like it or not, we are bound to one another by the land we choose to live on. Whether we like it or not, we are destined to cross paths over and over again. I believe that our shared sense of love for this land can bind us together. It is the intention of Arcadian American Farms to be a benefit to each of our neighbors regardless of their position on this issue. So dear neighbors, as we continue our journey along the winding roads of Silver Springs Road, let us not build houses and homes, but as, not just build houses and homes, but as we become more and more of a neighborhood, let us also become a community. May God bless you all. In Jesus's name.
Thank you. Chase Spillman. Oh, let me get. I imagine Elijah.
And also Elijah. Yes. Matt, Elijah Gramowski, fifteen two one eight East Faculty Springs Road, Kingman, Arizona. I would just like to briefly add, we were unable to foster these signatures in the appropriate time needed, but for the consideration of the commission and our neighbors, we have also received, if I can put this here, that's appropriate?
It's upside down. There you go.
We have garnered as well, a hundred, I believe a hundred and twenty support, letters, signatures of support from neighbors, many of which live on Silver Springs, Mojave County and the surrounding area. We only wanted to mention this as to convey the greater sense of cooperation and enthusiasm that we receive from many other people in our community and thought maybe that our neighbors as well would be interested to know that we have such great support, and that's all we would like to mention. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we're happy to answer any questions at the end.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have Don Hefler, and I would like for Jeremiah Norman to be waiting. Laura, is our, our three, two minutes working? Okay.
Don Hefler, I live at one five four zero seven East Hefler Road. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I'm opposed to this rezoning, and I speak on behalf of a contingent of local residents and landowners, all of whom have either signed my letter of opposition or have submitted one of their own. Many of us have been in the Silver Springs neighborhood for twenty to thirty years and longer in cases. When we came here, all of us had a vision, to live in a safe, quiet, rural residential area. We spent considerable amounts of money and time building roads, adding to the electric grid, drilling wells so that we might achieve our visions. The applicant and his investment group have a vision as well, to build an agrotourism resort. They're already operating this commercial venture on their adjacent parcels and have been in violation of multiple building and zoning ordinances. Where does the conversion of our residential neighborhood end? I expect they will be requesting a rezon for their adjacent parcels next. It's come to my attention that this group owns approximately three hundred acres in various parcels. One can only expect that they intend to convert all of them to commercial use. The general plan states in part that commercial development in rural development areas may be appropriate if the proposed uses are intended to serve local residents. Rather than benefit local residents, this business has a negative impact on the value of surrounding properties, for one. Perhaps more importantly, with the increase in traffic, dust, noise, smoke from campfires, and the unvetted transient element that is being introduced into our neighborhood, the safety and quality of life for the existing residents is being negatively affected. If this group would like to operate a commercial venture, they should begin by purchasing a commercial property rather than inserting themselves into the middle of a residential neighborhood and changing it to suit their purpose.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Jeremiah, Jeremy, sorry. And I want Charles and Ellen Greenwald waiting.
My name is Jeremy Norman. I own the property at one five one three five Faculty Springs, and I agree with everything Don has to say, and I just bought my property so I wouldn't have to be in a commercial area and get away from town and enjoy the freedom of, sorry. I really oppose this, I really oppose this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charles Bruce Greenwald, and my sister's Ellen Greenwald. We own the property twenty seven sixty North Silver Springs Road, and we've had it for sixty-five years. And we are opposed to rezoning any property in our local area. It's not what is, its intent was for, and I just ask you to consider what Mr. Hefler said, because I think he said it quite well. So, that's it, really.
All right, well, thank you very much, sir.
And, and our land is, is directly north of this property. We, we have Silver Springs Road, North Greenwald Road, and our southern border is Faculty Springs Road.
Thank you.
So we'll be directly impacted if there is any impact negative.
Okay, I have Kevin Schmidt, and I'm sorry about this one, Vouch Ming, is that correct? Sieng, S-I-E-N-G. Your name and your address, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kevin Schmidt. I own property at fourteen seven fifty East Randy Ranch Road. Have so for, for twenty years now. And I, like everybody else in this area, when we signed our deeds, we were in the agreement as to the direction of this community, agriculture residential. I don't understand why somebody would come into this area, do the same thing I did with the intent of changing this, and I believe that they did, because all of this has been going on for a number of years, though, though it has just come to my attention here recently. So my whole thought here is that they've, they've done it to make a buck. And this is not a commercial area. I'm highly opposed. My wife is highly opposed. Everybody I've talked to is highly opposed to anything, anywhere in the, in our area being changed to commercial. You always have the concern about if what they're doing flops, they sell the property, and then the next guy gets it zoned that way, and, and who knows what his intentions will be. It's, it's sad that we have to police these things. Are there concerns? Again, are, we've always had, already had discussion about fire in the area, to bring a bunch of people in on a regular basis to camp, and I question that. I've seen the area, and it looks more like a guest ranch to me, because there are all kinds of like tiny homes or something over there, which to me a campground is, you know, picnic benches and open spaces, to set up tents or bring in an RV or something like that. And that doesn't look like the, the other part. I don't understand the farms part of the whole thing either. But our concerns are, again, fire, the added traffic in the area, bringing in transient local or, in transient people that aren't vested in the community running around our area. I'm not sure how they're going to stay entertained on ten acres of property. The trash, we've already, our, our off-ramp there on the freeway is, is constantly just a trash mess because people stop and do that.
Thank you, sir.
So I, I have concerns about the rest of the community once we start bringing that in. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I don't know how to pronounce your name. Come on up to the podium.
Hello, everyone.
There you go.
And happy Valentine. My name is Woodman Sieng, and I'm a twenty-three resident, years resident of Mojave County. I'm also a neighbor of Arcadian American Farms. It's my privilege that I'm standing here to share of the love that I have for Kingman, for Mojave County, that I'm a Cambodian survivor. I stand here today because God share the love, want me to share the love to everyone, to all in this city. I'm standing here today to support the community of Arcadian American Farms. It's a community that need all of us to be a connector, to make it complete circle of love. I'm standing here today to thank you all, to every one of us that leave our life to the fullest. I love nature. That's why I'm here in Kingman, Arizona. I own a lot of property in Mojave County because I love the nature. I love what I never seen before. I love the community as a whole. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I hope you all will approve this item number five. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hubbard?
Is this considered one of those glamping things where it's halfway between a tent and a motorhome? Where you have a semi truck with places to sleep or whatever?
Yes, sir. Elijah Gramowski, fifteen two one eight East Faculty Springs Road, Kingman, Arizona. Presently, we operate a farm, and many of the tiny homes that have been mentioned are farmer housing for our seasonal farm workers, not a part of our camping operation. The campground is a different project than our farm, but they work in tandem together to produce agrotourism opportunities for farm stays so that people can come learn about farming potentials here in Mojave County. The proposed site is adjacent to the active farm, which is a microgreens operation, and will contain tents which are geodesic domes. If I can find this. Well, I'm unable to find it, but they are geodesic domes, sir, so they, they are, they are not going to be RVs. Neither will it be available like a K O A for people to be pulling off the highway in their RVs or trailers and setting up tents. Our, our, our guests are vet, vetted, they are ID verified and background checked. The nature of the price range of our stays will assuage any riffraff, if you will, from coming around the area because of our price points for our farm staycations, and they will not be setting up their own accommodations, but will have luxury glamping geodesic domes with county regulated facilities such as bathing facilities and the like.
When I was reading through all the information on this, what are the sanitation type?
We are going to be building, we are going to be building a bath house and are presently working on septic compliance for the future of that bath house on that.
You have a well, water?
Yes, sir.
Is the well above the sanitation or below it?
Well, the, the well is actually on our farm property, and we'll be water hauling it over to, over to the campground.
You put a well below the sanitation, so that, that doesn't sound too good?
We will be following all county regulations, and I'm sure they would not allow that.
Okay.
It seems to me that you have almost an equal amount of people against and for. Have you had a meeting?
No, ma'am. We, we, well, we have a meeting with many of our neighbors. We have not had the time or the privilege to meet all of our neighbors up and down Silver Springs, but we do make it a point every time we see someone on the street to stop and wave, to be friendly with everyone that we've spoken with. And we also have an open house policy that every neighbor that we've ever spoken to is aware that they are always welcome to come to our farm, to ask us questions, to walk our premise, to see the cleanliness of our facilities. We have, we have an immense forward-facing kind of mentality with our, with our neighborhood. We understand that some people like to be left alone. I believe that's why we have not spoken with them, but we are also happy to remind everyone that you're welcome to Arcadian American Farms to speak to us in person if there are any other questions that people have. Regardless of the decision that the county makes, moving forward or not, we'd still like to be able to continue the discussion with our neighbors to alleviate any problems that they might have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicants?
I have a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Martin.
It appears that many of the letters in favor of this project are from people that do not directly reside in the neighborhood but just are residents of the county.
We have a mixed, it's mixed.
That was my comment.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. We, we do have a mix. Out of maybe the hundred and twenty-five signatures that we've garnered, maybe only twenty-five to thirty of them are in the direct vicinity affected by this area, while the remaining of those signatures are our friends, family, business owners here in the area that have been to our farm and support our project.
Okay, thank you. Are there any?
What exactly do you grow on your farm?
I'm so sorry?
What exactly do you grow on your farm?
Microgreens.
We have a high-density microgreens operation, and so instead of a farm that does monocropping and requires large swaths of land to be dedicated to a single crop, we do indoor interior high-density microgreens. So that's a, it's a lot of crop in a small space.
Okay, all right. No.
If I may, ma'am, well, I'm, I'm sorry, after, after you.
Actually, what I was going to say is, thank you very much, and since the commissioners have no more questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to close the open meeting at this time, the open, the public hearing, and ask for a motion. Want to make a motion?
Not really.
Motion to deny.
What did you say, Commissioner Martin? I didn't hear you.
Motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
And I would be a nay. So what do we have, Laura?
Commissioner Patillo, what was your vote?
I, I, I would be opposed to denying it.
So you would be a nay.
Nay. And Commissioner Morris, you are a, you're an aye?
I'm an aye.
Let's see, let me just do a quick roll call if you don't mind. I just want to make sure I have my numbers right. Okay, so we have Commissioner Bradshaw?
Nay.
Commissioner Helms?
Nay.
Commissioner Hassett?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? I, I really need some clarification on something. Your applicant, your address is one five two one eight East Faculty Springs Road, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Do you have a Facebook page?
The Arcadian American Farms?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we do.
So your logo's like white and green?
That is correct, sir. That is.
So you said microgreens, yet you've got pygmies and goats and chicken coops and, and hikers and all kinds of stuff on here, so what are you doing?
We're an agrotourism operation.
I'm sorry?
Agrotourism.
Okay, but you just sat here and told this commission and this entire room full of people that you're.
Sir, if, if it makes a difference, our, our animals are not a part of our farm operation instead of our, for our own family use. We do not sell goats or chickens. That's our own, for our own farm hand.
Okay. And, and a lot of the, the letter, the people who are here to support, which I, I understand, you know, the public can fill out whatever they want, but you have the exact same handwriting on a lot of these as, that's also on your application. So I'm assuming they're the staff?
That's her, that's my wife. She used to do that for us because we were all checking in.
There was, there was a big bustle at the table, and so we decided to step back from the table as Mrs. Ramirez filled out our names for us. We did not think that we'd be a problem, and we apologize.
Five others that have the same handwriting. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was your Facebook page. Thank you. No, 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 no. I'm sorry. That opportunity's gone. Thank you. Thank you. I wanted clarification that this was who I was looking at.
Sir, absolutely.
Commissioner Hassett, what is your vote? The, the motion is to deny.
My motion is to deny.
So you aye?
You agree?
I, sure, aye.
Oh, we, we said nay, but we were in support of denying this. I just want to make sure that we're.
I just want to make sure that we're, because we both said nay, but you're denying it as well.
Okay, so the, the, okay, so let's start over again. If you're saying aye, you agree with the, the denial. If you're a nay, you don't agree with the denial. Okay, so let's start back over. Commissioner Bradshaw?
Okay, after we, I, I am in favor of the denial.
So you're aye. Okay, and Commissioner Helms?
In favor of the denial, aye.
Aye. And Commissioner Hassett?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Commissioner Hubbard?
Aye.
Commissioner Patillo? Commissioner Morse?
Aye.
And Chairperson Gillette?
I don't believe that I need to vote.
That's fine. It's five to, um, one, because Commissioner Martin, you are an, also an aye, right? I apologize.
Correct, I made the motion.
Yeah, that's right. So it's six to, um, six to one with a one abstaining, and that gives the motion to pass.
Okay, so what, that, what that amounts to is that the application has been denied.
It's recommended for denial to the board of supervisors.
The board of supervisors are the ones who make the final decision.
May I ask something? Can we add stipulations to, is there any stipulations that we might add?
No, we cannot. But thank you very much.
Recommend you go to the board of supervisors' meeting.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And may I submit this to the clerk for the consideration of?
You may just submit it to Laura. Item number six, staff report by Amy Patsy.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a rural development area land use designation to a neighborhood commercial land use designation and a rezone from an AR 5A agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2 general commercial zone for Assessor's Parcel Number 333-29075F to allow for a restaurant, bar, and tea room in the Valley Vista vicinity. Staff has received one petition of opposition, one petition of support, 11 letters of opposition, and 19 letters of support. Staff is recommending denial as this is considered spot zoning and does not align with the current Mojave County General Plan for the area.
Uh, thank you, Amy. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I do have some people who want to speak on this. Is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak? Anne Seeny is her, your name, right?
To clarify, my full name is Shirley Anne Seeny. I go by Anne. 4395 North Skylark Road in Kingman is our present address. Also, my husband Steve is here. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Happy Arizona Statehood Day. We've lived in Kingman 22 years and have watched the changes that happen with an area that grows. When the vineyards were planted and the wineries and tasting rooms were built, we thought they were a beautiful addition to this area. As we got to know the owners and their products over the years, it seemed to us that something was missing: food. Not everyone knew they could bring their own, especially if they were visiting from somewhere else. The winery owners are focused on producing a great product and are not interested in running a commercial kitchen. We want to fill that gap in helping residents and visitors feel welcome and wanted. So we purchased the parcel on Brooks Boulevard, to which we contributed to funds in 2020 to have that road hard-surfaced across from the wineries. In many other areas with wineries, food for visitors is either provided on-site or nearby. We are in the situation as we are proposing. On 7 November last year, we held an informal get-together at Little Old Wine Drinkers, which is owned and operated by Stephen and Susan Pedrosa. About 30 people showed up. We didn't take attendance, we were there to provide information and answers. Apparently, some of what I said has been turned into hearsay by people who weren't there, or was taken too seriously or out of context, or even spun to fit a separate narrative. Some of those who are opposed have overlaid their negative experiences in other places onto our proposed business. The two issues that have consistently been brought up as reasons for rezoning denial are the addition of, additional use of Concho Drive through Valley Vista, which is the only ingress egress route to the Mountain Vista Ranches area, and the impact our small business would bring to the peaceful residential area of Mountain Vista Ranches, of which all properties are five or more acres. I am prepared to speak to those two issues, but I might have a little, I might run over time a little bit. Regarding the use of Concho Drive through Valley Vista, we completely understand the concern. We also get that public, the Public Works Department has time and budget constraints and cannot meet everyone's expectations. The approval of the petition to improve superstition from Route 66 to Valley Vista is a step in the right direction to provide another option to the traveling public. Regarding our impact on Mountain Vista Ranches, Ranch residents, we are planning a house-like building with a 30-seat, that would be 15 tables for two, restaurant on one side and a separate 20-seat tea room on the other side, but in the same building. They will have different operating hours. There is no event center planned, as some people have said. We are going to build a separate residence for ourselves as well, so we will be living there. The restaurant and bar license application is simply so that our diners might be able to enjoy a drink or a cocktail with our locally-produced wines, rums, and beers with their dinners. It will not have seats. We will be required to meet lighting safety standards and the specifications of Mojave County's dark sky ordinance. Our lighting will be minimal and not on when we're open.
Chairperson Gillette, would you like to give a minute or two extra, or?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Steve and I have spent the better part of the last 30 days pruning vines at one of the wineries, and I have, and we have both had the opportunity to observe traffic on the hard-surface Brooks Boulevard. Locals go back and forth, and the speeders have been a couple of motorcycles and FedEx and UPS trucks. We've seen a few cows, and we are prepared to fence them out. The larger part of noise seems to be generated by barking dogs, ATVs, and large pickups. Trash is already collected once a week, and that's all we would need. I have trained as a master gardener, and I know how to properly compost, grow, and maintain gardens and landscaping. Since the folks opposing our project started a couple of petitions with dubious claims, we felt we needed to counter that with one of our own, and we have submitted to the commission, petition with well over 100 signatures of support from county residents, because we feel that this is an amenity for the county, not just for the local area. We see our place as another dining option in the area that all of Mojave County residents and visitors can enjoy, as I said, not just the folks in Valley Vista and Mountain Vista Ranches. We know that we will not appeal to everyone, and that's okay with us. We also will be paying a good amount in property taxes because of the additional, the, the commercial zoning, and along with taxes on what we are serving, what we will be serving, and we will be adding a few more, a few more jobs to the economy as well. We do appreciate your time and attention, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. You will be available for questions, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I have Kristen, it looks like Avila, and Gail Days, who wish to speak on this subject.
My name is Kristen Avila. I live at 10688 North Benjamin Road, Kingman, Arizona. I'm in support of the restaurant and tea room. I think it would be a good thing for our community and have somewhere nice to eat closer to my house. That's it.
Thank you. Please step up to the podium and give your name and your address.
My name is Gail Davis. I live at 7111 East Brooks Boulevard, Kingman, Arizona, and that is in the Mountain Vista Ranches area. My husband Chris and I have lived in that area, we're just adjacent to the proposed restaurant location, for almost 18 years now. We're very much in favor of having an upscale dining facility that we could utilize for special occasions, date night, Sunday brunches, and we believe that this would be an asset to our community, and we think it could possibly improve property values. We know that we don't like to have to drive all the way to Kingman every time, and of course, I know this isn't open to the whole Mojave County, but for us locally, we think it'd be a wonderful asset, and we've known Steve and Anne for a number of years now, and we believe that they would be great proprietors, and we're in favor of this restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to speak, sir?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Shane Luthwait. I currently reside in Kingman at 3771 Prairie View Drive, but I, I do have land in Mountain Vista that I've been making preparations for, and I thought this was an exciting idea as a, I guess, a younger resident, um, for several reasons. I think Valley Vista, if, if it's going to call itself a community and be 30 minutes from Kingman, then it would definitely benefit all the residents locally to have more options, even potentially, I mean, so many people rely on a Dollar General. It would be great if we could have a farmer's market nearby or something a little better that we didn't have to, you know, I mean, it, it does add up with gas prices, especially with me, I'm getting 10 miles a gallon, but, you know, I'm just, I, I think it would be a real exciting proposition. I don't think it would disrupt the night sky, as she mentioned there, and, so I've, I've done a little bit of research on, and I really was pretty open-minded about would, would I, because I, I got this land thinking, oh, it's quiet, it's so nice and peaceful. I don't think it's going to disrupt that. And the increased traffic on Concho Drive, I think people really feel that because they're trying to walk, and if we, if the, if there would be a sidewalk installed, people would feel less, and there's definitely room down that whole, down that whole drive. So I think it would be, you know, there's ways to mitigate any potential problems, and I think it would add a lot more benefit to the, to the local area. Yeah, that's, that's about all I'd like to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the commissioners, do you have any questions of this applicant? Oh, we have some more? Oh, sorry. I'm going to open the public hearing, because I found some more. I have Anita, can't say the last name, and H. Lee Barnes. Would you guys come to the podium, please? State your name and your address.
My name is Anita Rayom. I live at 10705 North Campbell Lindo Lane out in Kingman, out in Mountain Vista Ranches. We are a very quiet residential community out there, with the exception of a couple of wineries, which are okay and a little, um, they're quiet. A restaurant and tea room and bar, it doesn't belong out there in the dirt. It belongs where more people can enjoy it in a resident, in, in a more commercial area. There are plots right as you enter Valley Vista that are already commercial. They, we're revitalizing downtown. What a great fit that would be for downtown. We've got a lot of visitors down there, both local and people coming through visiting. I know that because I work down there. I worry about the traffic. I worry about the noise. We have cattle all over the place. They end up in my yard, they eat my plants, you know, and, and people have been known to hit cows on the road, but we're open, open range, their cows and their horses. So that's, that's a danger. A lot of us walk our dogs and, and do our exercises out on the dirt roads. It's very quiet out there. We welcome neighbors, new neighbors that build their houses and want to, to be there in a five-acre, very peaceful area where you can have your own large animals or small animals and, and live in peace. We've also been threatened that if, if this passes, that there will be a trailer park coming in next to it, and that is not good for the area. And they said if this does not pass, then, then maybe we'll bring in a pot farm or a slaughterhouse, and it doesn't really fit either.
Thank you, ma'am. I forgot who we called up next. Your name and your address, please, sir.
Yes, my name's H. Lee Barnes, 10855 North Painted Rock Drive, Kingman, Arizona. Excuse my voice. I object to it for basically the same reasons that my, my neighbor just stated. It is open range. There are cattle out there all the time. If you open up a bar, bars are not the same as wine tasting. Bars are places where people go to drink. Traditionally, in this country, in cities and in towns, bars have been restricted to commercial areas, not residential areas. Okay, so one of my objections is that specifically. The other is that, we went through this before when there was a proposal for a trailer park. Breaking, breaking the zoning, to me, it seems, opens up a whole door to bringing in other businesses, and yes, who's to say that we couldn't end up again with more applications for a trailer park or something similar? And those of us who have invested our, and I'm near, I'm obviously retired now, but I invested my money here to retire, to have a community where it is open to cattle and cowboys and horses and people that I grew up around in New Mexico and West Texas, and I like that. I like that, and so I think most of us out there like that. Would it be nice to have another place to eat? Sure. Put it up on Route 66. We can drive that far. Would I like to go to a bar? I don't go to bars anymore because I had problems in the past with bars, but anyhow, thank you very much. That's my statement.
Thank you, sir. And the next person is Marsh.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members. I am Logan Marsh, 917 Emory Park Road, Golden Valley. First of all, I want to say I fully support this, this rezoning for several reasons. With that said, I've got to know Ann and Steve pretty well. They're really good patrons at our establishment in town. I don't know if you guys know, I own the Red Cellar and Bistro on Wallop by Mountain Road. I support their vision. I can assure you, they're not putting a trailer park or a pot farm in. What they are envisioning for Valley Vista is very similar and elegant to what we present to Kingman. Not only would it really help the area with tourism, the wineries depend on the tourism to pay their tax dollars, of course, and I know that Stephen with Little Wine Drinkers and Micah and his wife with Cellar Winery, they're in support of this. This would drive, of course, a lot of people are in opposition for the traffic, but this is what drives our economy. This is what keeps our county alive and brings tax dollars in. I'm in support of this project. I'm in support of Ann and Steve. You couldn't ask for better business owners. They're honest, and they're really good people. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing once again. The commissioners have any questions? Did you fill out an app, a paper to speak? Okay, come on down to the podium and give me your name and your address.
Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it. I would have signed up to speak, but I was kind of busy, and I know that's no excuse, but thank you for the exception. I am totally against.
Your name and your address.
I'm sorry. Rita Sellnow, 7047 East Nuttall Drive. We're right off Painted Rock out there. I am totally opposed to this because everybody's been speaking about why we don't want it, business, et cetera. I'm going to talk to you about a personal thing. My husband and I bought the five acres out there a few years back because that's where we knew we wanted to settle.
we knew we wanted to settle, because it was quiet, it was peaceful, it was dark. I can go on and on and on. I don't want to hear that this is going to bring in more business and more revenue, and we've all seen how big cities have gone to you-know-where because of this. I mean, I lived in Las Vegas when it was little. I lived near Phoenix when it was little. I lived in New York when there were so many people. I've been running from people my whole life, and this is where my husband and I wanted to settle down because of that reason. It's beautiful out there. Putting in a restaurant, in a tea room, I read the menu that I got from friends that went, you don't know what the food is, there was no prices on it, it gave you little information, and I did hear, again, rumor, that if, that's not as bad as getting a pot farm, or a slaughterhouse, or whatever. No, 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 that's not what this is about. This is about us local residents who do not want this. We've worked our whole lives, paid a lot of money for property. My husband and I built this house, a lot of it ourselves, over the last two years. This was our dream, after working our whole lives. My husband was with the Air Force, at Edwards Air Force Base, for thirty-four years. Why does that give him less, when she spews what they do in the United States Air Force? Why do they get more? Well, my husband fought hard for this country. He kept our jets flying, and this is all we asked? Five acres, out in the middle of nowhere, and just be left alone? There's plenty of land near Kingman they could build on.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the commissioners if they have any questions.
Yeah, I have one.
Commissioner Hubbard.
It's a free-range area, and she's talking about putting up fences. I'm opposed to that. No fences. The whole thing is-
Any other commissioners have any questions?
I do.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
So I guess, so first question is, is, you know, what kind of facilities are out there, as far as utilities? Is this, is, and to be fair, I don't, I don't, not familiar with the area, so forgive me. Water, sewer systems, is this a well? How do you facilitate utilities?
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Shirley Ancini, 4395 North Skylark Road, Kingman, 86409. Right now, all the vacant properties out in Mountain Vista Ranches are responsible for figuring out how to get their own. Mojave Electric Co-op does run along Brooks, and it's, it can be used to bring power to parcels, which, since we're right on Brooks, that would be a power thing for us. We also would supplement with some solar, probably, because power does tend to go out there a little bit. Water, you're either on a, you either haul, you're on a personal well, or you're on a shared well. And we know we will have to put in a, a well as well.
One, one last question. So as far as the emergency services, are they readily available out there? What's the, what is the response time? It seems like it is a long distance from the main, from sixty-six.
It is. Valley Vista does have a fire department substation there, and we have consulted with them. They can respond if they have nothing else that they're responding to at the time. So there is that option.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner Helms.
Thank you. We, it looks like we might have rezoned just recently, or not recently, but in the past, for recreational, commercial, slightly down the block, for the largest winery. So this rezoning has, has taken place before, in the same area, to facilitate for the wineries? And she's asking for a similar thing, is that correct? Can staff answer that? How did that take place, when we rezoned for the winery?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Helms, let me pull up the year here. So it looks like the Stetson Winery was rezoned to CRE, which is Commercial Recreation, back in 2011. Typically, the, that was done for the events that they have out there. And as, from a staff perspective, that CRE, that Commercial Recreation Zone, we allow for in rural-type areas, that's what you have for campgrounds and things like that. And so we can recommend approval of that, with no commercial in the area. In this case, to allow for a restaurant, that requires the C2 zone, which is what they're applying for here today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Yes. I'm going to call for a motion.
Motion to deny per staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Helms. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number seven, staff report by Amy Patsy.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 33025051, to allow for an airstrip runway in an AR 36A agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum lot size zone in the Sohei vicinity. Staff has received two petitions of opposition, six letters of opposition, and fifteen letters of support. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is here, and if you wish to speak.
Have you heard if possible?
Okay, you'll be available for questions. These are on seven. I'm going to ask for, it looks like Reba Roemson and Gillian to come up and stand in line. Reba, is that it, the right? It looks like R., it could be Rob, Rob Roemson? No, I don't know if he's coming. Nope. Okay, I can't-
How do we meet, Robin Thompson?
Yep, nailed it, Robin Thompson.
Okay. Your name and your address, please, ma'am.
My name is Robin Thompson. My address is 3339 East Josiah Drive. My property is adjacent to the property where the airstrip is proposed. I am here to support this use of the property. I have personal experience of hobbyist people flying, and so I understand what the activity would be like on the airstrip, and I am not opposed to it. And with the information that I, that I have read in the application that was put in, the conversations with the person making the request, I've gotten my questions answered, and I trust the integrity of this person, representing what he is intending to do with the property. I have read some of the opinion column comments, and it is exaggeration of concerns, as far as I see, but I acknowledge that people have things that they fear, and I hear people here this morning, talking about a lot of fears. And I just encourage everyone to not let fear destroy your neighborhood relationships, and take time to talk face-to-face to the people that you need to talk to, to make sure that you know what you need to know in these situations. Again, I'm supporting this application for an airstrip on that property.
Thank you. Gillian?
I'm the applicant, I wanted to read-
Oh, sorry, I've got to get another one. Carol Campbell. And I want, in the wings, John Elson.
People who actually can write. Hi, my name is Carol Campbell, 3355 West Smith, in Sohei. A couple of things I have a problem with is the location, basically. Those planes would be flying over our roads and our homes, and it's a safety risk. Yeah, she was talking about fear. I have a fear of a plane coming into my house, thank you. Even an accident in open areas behind or around could cause a fire. We have winds, because of the mountains, that change, and are a lot of times heavier than what's here in Kingman, and fire is an issue. Another safety issue is the exhaust from, I'm assuming leaded fuel, since it's a small plane. And that has been shown to cause health issues for humans and animals, and detrimental also to the plants. Any stored fuel would also cause a problem, if it was leaked. Several people in our neighborhood also have horses, so my concern is that they could be spooked, and either hurt themselves, and/or if they were being ridden, they could throw the rider. Some people have been saying it would be helpful to have, have it for helicopter landing. But to get a person from one of our homes up to where that airstrip is, it would be easier to get to the hospital. And since it's open range, you know, we, I bought my property knowing it was open range, so I deal with driving safely, because on the way-
Okay. So anyways, I'm against this, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. I believe the next one is John Elson, is that correct? And standing in the wings, I need Adam Green.
That is correct. My name is John, last name is Elson. My address is 4331 North Nevada Street, Golden Valley, Arizona. But I do reside in Sohei, and I was given some thought about all this. And my, my, my reason for being here is to give the opposition. And the opposition for this is, I know this is going to be a dirt airstrip, okay? And that's fine to have a dirt airstrip, I've got no problem with that. But then again, I look at it, the benefit of all the neighbors, and myself, and the people around this airstrip, and I come up with very little support whatsoever. I can't see how this airstrip is going to benefit anyone outside of the owner to go out and fly planes. Now, no. Does he just fly his own plane? Does he have a flying club? Do they bring in helicopters later? The former lady that was up here, she mentioned the winds and stuff like that. I'm looking at the, the safety of it as well. It is a bad idea. I've been, I've had a house since 2007, in the Golden, in the Sohei area, and the winds can come up, and it can be very, very strong. It could lead to disaster. And for somebody to take the liability of an airstrip, and go up in the air, and then all of a sudden have the weather change, and then have to come back and land, and can't land, that could be a real problem. Besides, there's an airport in Kingman, Arizona, there's one planned down on 94395, down by these newer restaurants that they're putting in down there. What's the point? You can go down there, you can go to Kingman, Arizona, you can go to Bullhead, but now we've got to go out through a subdivision? No. No, I'm sorry, this, this is impacting people in many ways. You've got noise, you've got pollution, you've got safety issues.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
And you must be Adam Green.
I must be Adam Green.
And I want Gary Kirchner standing, waiting.
I live at 4680 Thurman Drive. I also own two properties that would connect to the proposed airstrip. You know, one thing I'd like to ask, has any of you guys ever been out to the area to look at what he wants to do? It's pretty, like the previous gentleman just mentioned, we do get a lot of hard winds. The topography is, he wants to put this on top of a ridge, okay? That doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because you're, you're higher at the point, you could, you know, if you slid off the edge. Brought up also was the, the fact that we are in open range also out there. We do get cows. Two thousand pounds of beef is not very good for a small plane, I'm sure. The access, the only access we've got on that would be Ranch Road, that I could see. And that road, during the last rains, we had water growing across that, probably within a couple foot deep, very heavy. There's no water on those properties up there at this time. The nearest fire station we have would be, I believe, on the far side of Golden Valley, off of Estrella, or Egar, someplace out there, oh, Colorado, I believe. Who's going to take care of watching and making sure that the permits are followed on all this? Who's going to make sure that, about the winds? You know, we do have concerns about the winds, the fuel, any kind of lights or anything like that. Now, it's a private airstrip, so this is private, supposedly, now. Could it be made into something more public later? I don't know. Could be a concern. Are we opening up Pandora's Box? And we all know how that went. Insurance. Thirty years ago, when I was in the, I'm still in the trucking business, but if I wanted to work on an airstrip, or an airport area, our trucks were required to have a $5 million insurance policy. Is he going to provide insurance? What about us neighbors? If we get hit, or our dogs, or our cats, or our kids, or houses, whatever, we need to take care of it.
Thank you, sir. Gary Kirchner is next, followed by Dominique Green.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak on behalf of some of my neighbors up there. I live in the Sohei. My name is Gary Kirchner. I live at 3428 North Mountain Drive. This whole thing of an airstrip in our neighborhood is ludicrous. We are very much opposed to it. Well, I am, I can only speak for myself, but I have spoken to my neighbors. There are several elements. Number one is safety. How's my house insurance going to be affected by airplanes flying over the top? I am free-range out there, just like the previous issue where people living out in Val Vista. We moved out there. Sohei is a little gem in Golden Valley, because we like the rural lifestyle that it provides with the cattle, the wildlife. This airstrip is being put down in a wash at the end of Ranch Road. We're facing the possibility of a solar ranch just north of us. We have several animals and wildlife that needs to be considered in this area. I'd like to have an environmental impact study seen on this. We have gila monsters, we have tortoises, that all utilize this giant wash that comes down, like your, your picture showed up there. And this is going to obstruct their travel, most definitely. Where does the water go right now? This is in the middle of a canyon. We put in a, an airstrip, a dirt airstrip. And by the way, out there in Sohei, you, you might have been there before, we are paved roads out there. We paid to have the roads paved, so we don't have the dust in the area. We've invested in this area to be a rural area, dust-free, and now we're going to have an airstrip, that, that, again, like the, the former guy said, he stole a lot of my thunder there, points that he brought up. But the noise, come on. And, and Kingman, there's an airstrip in Kingman. There's one down in Last Chance, down on 93. There's Bullhead, there's lots of airstrips in the area. And besides that, where does the water come from? In Sohei, right now, we're paying extra money, if you talk to our water board, just to get water to our residents. Please consider and do not approve of this airstrip.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
Scott Verville, you'll be standing in, in the line.
Good morning, my name is Dominique Green. I reside at 2719 Wallop High Avenue in Kingman, Arizona. About ten years ago, my husband and I moved back into the area. He was a Marine, and we bought property in Sohei Estates, which is surrounded by three large mountains, very quiet area, very friendly neighbors. And as the previous speakers have talked, the high winds in the area are erratic, to say the least. We've had trampolines go over our houses, we've had, let's see, where's my notes here? Numerous dust storms, as well as microbursts that have come through our neighborhoods. And with the unpredictable winds- And with the unpredictable winds, it's just pretty insane that the airstrip would want to go in those mountains. As well as everyone else has talked about with the livestock that's out there, it is open range, and he has also proposed of putting fences in those areas for keeping out the cattle from going onto his airstrip. I oppose this airstrip going in for many reasons, but those are some issues that I think are important, as well as insurance purposes. If he's flying over and something happens and our homes get destroyed, who's reliable? As well as what do we have to do as homeowners for insurance if he gets this? Do we have to change our insurances? But that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Standing in line, we need Yvonne Bradrib. Bradrib?
I'm Scott Varville. I live at thirty-four eighty-F Ranch Road in Sohei. We've been there since ninety-five. I oppose this. Having been in mining and construction for my forty-eight years before I retired, when you do dirt work out here, you disrupt all of the top soils, all of the seed, root, everything. The dirt work that would be required for this because of the location is rather extraordinary quite a bit. To get a fifty-foot wide proposed strip along with a, like a neutral zone, you'd have to furrow or plow or dose about a hundred feet wide at least by two thousand feet. With the winds, once that soil's disturbed, it becomes a dust magnet for years to come. Unless they put an extraordinary amount of water down or some kind of a sealant, which is not EPA-approved, it's gonna cause dust issues. Safety issues, the noise, small aircraft, one maybe now, how about ten? How about twenty? How many? Once you approve this, it changes the subdivide. You can break it down into three-acre lots or whatever they decide. The eighty-four-year-old lady that owns the property obviously isn't looking toward the future. She's looking for a little bit of a cash cow, I assume. These developers are not from Arizona, they're out of California, and they do not have the community's best interest at heart. And in my experience over the years, long-term, this, they never work out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Standing in line is Brian Viba. No clapping, please.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Bradrib. I live at four-six-one-five North Sohei Estates, very close to the subject property. This property lies in a canyon in the foothills of the mountains in the north part of Sohei. It's a well-established residential community. The mountain ranges in that area rise up to over a hun, a thousand feet more than the subject property. As I said, there's plenty of residential homes there, mainly to the west of the parcel. An aircraft malfunction, pilot area, medical issue, would cause an aircraft to go out of control. That could crash into residential areas, would be fatal, and likely cause a serious fire. The small piston engine planes run on avgas, a high-octane leaded aviation fuel. The exhaust emissions are considered toxic by the EPA. Aircraft will be flying low, over or in the vicinity of homes emitting undesirable fumes that contain lead, and they'll hang around the canyon area polluting the community. The small aircraft are also very noisy. Noise carries a long way in this neighborhood. It would likely resound around the canyon, exacerbating the noise and be a disturbance we would prefer not to hear. If the airstrip were permitted, would there be restrictions on the number of flights? The applicant did say a couple of times a week, but how would that be monitored and what would prevent the applicant's friends or family that own planes from flying to visit? Also, could this special use permit then open up the possibility for a small airpark to be set up in the future? And again, if flights were permitted after dusk, would there be a light pollution in the air which would impact night skies for stargazers? We all moved here, knowing this area was residential, and all the parcels around us were also zoned for residential homes, not for an airstrip. I see no benefit whatsoever to the community of this product, of this project. It would only be a disruption to the peace and tranquility of our quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Brian, I can't read the last name. Looks like M-N-E-A-B-A or something like that. So we'll just wait on that. Catherine Green.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Green. My husband and I and our four children moved to Sohei.
Need an address too, please.
Oh, sorry. My name's Catherine Green. I live at forty-six eighty Thurman Drive here in Sohei, and my husband and I own our primary residence and a couple of pieces of property that are within the three hundred feet of this proposed airstrip. Twenty-seven years ago, my husband and I and our four children, we moved to the Sohei subdivision. The reason why we chose to live there and raise our four children is because we were surrounded by the beautiful mountains, a very quiet, peaceful surrounding area, and we have always had great neighbors. We now find ourselves in the middle of this controversial proposed zoning change. We could have never imagined someone who would even want to put an airstrip so close to so many homes and with so many residents there. Since a private airstrip must follow local laws and structural safety guidelines, we'd like to know what agency will monitor and how often will inspections be done to make sure that this proposed airstrip is following or in, with all the guidelines as the pilot and the plane? This proposal to, would be, or a person would be flying in and out, and there would be compliance issues that would need to be addressed to ensure the safety of not only our neighbors but for our homes and for personal property. There is the wildlife, whereas other people mentioned, what kind of environmental impact will we have? We have a herd of deer population that roams all over the neighborhood, and what kind of effect will this have on them? We also have the range-free cattle, as was mentioned, the tortoises, we have the gila monsters there, and there are so many different types of things that will be impacted in a negative way. This person mentioned, the applicant, that this was gonna be for personal usage. Well, again, we have the Kingman Regional Airport. It is only twenty-four minutes.
Thank you, ma'am.
We are strongly opposed to this airstrip.
All right. And is Adam going to speak as well?
He, he spoke.
Okay.
He already called.
Then I'm gonna try this again. Brian Miller. Sorry. And Jeremy, oh, boy.
Jeremy W.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Brian Miller. I live at three-three-six-nine North Mayor Road in Golden Valley. I met the landowner when he did a couple of electrical jobs for me on different pieces of property. And something you have to look at, the plane that he flies one or two times a week, it's no noisier than a semi going down the highway. Where don't you have wind in Golden Valley or in Sohei? You know, everybody's saying the wind, the, a little single-engine plane isn't gonna make a lot of wind. But you gotta look at one other thing. Here you are with all these residents. We get older, don't we? Okay? Somebody has a heart attack. That lifelight knows there's no obstacles in his way. He can sit down there, get somebody immediately, and save their life. One life makes that worth gold. It saves one life, and all the complaints go away, and they say, thank you for saving my life. Okay? If not, by the way, they don't know what they're talking about. The closest fire station is on Bakobi. He's gotta go out to Chino, all the way up Chino, cross ninety-three. Bad accident on ninety-three. Lifelight can land there. He plans in the future to make a nice road up to it, too. So all the opposition oughta look, when the older person dies, whoops, we should've let him do it. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no talking, please. Jeremy W. Catching on to this. It might be worth, worth something, worth...
Is there a Jeremy here? Nope. Okay.
All right. Well, I guess I'll put it there. Logan Marsh and Shirley Alvetra.
Board Chair, Logan Marsh, nine-one-seven South Emery, Golden Valley, Arizona. You know, I'd come up here and talk in support, or you can talk in opposition, but I think what really matters here, and maybe most of you aren't aware of, I am also a pilot. And one of the reasons I moved to Arizona is because of the way the laws are written in Arizona. They're very similar to Alaska, Idaho, Montana, which is the only regulation that Arizona statutes really have with landing on your own land, is you have to be Class G, E, or F airspace. The proposed airstrip is in F airspace, and right above it is E, which is uncontrolled, unregulated. It is, in the statutes, you just need landowner permission. I think the land zoning, in my personal opinion, is a formality to follow local laws and governing bodies, but as the state statute stands, I can take my plane and fly right into my property and land in my backyard legally, as I believe that the applicant should. Regardless if you approve or deny this, he'll be able to do that. So I think everybody here should read the laws and understand it, maybe consult legal counsel, but that's the way it's written right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I say, please stop talking to each other while we have someone talking. I want Paul Speed to be standing, waiting.
Good morning. My name is Shirley Alvetri. I live at four-six-six-five North Smoke Tree Road in Sohei. I'm here today to concur with the majority of what I've heard from the other people to deny the evaluation of this airstrip. Commissioner Hassett, I noticed your propensity for social media, and I would ask that you navigate on Facebook to a username of Schmaggle, S-C-H-M-A-G-G-L-E, space D-O-R-F, and look at a posting from January twenty-fourth of this year.
Why don't you just save us the time and tell me?
Do what?
You could just tell me. I'm sure you already have it in front of you.
Have, have what?
Whatever you're referencing.
Oh, I, I have a, I actually have a, yeah. Can we put this up on the screen?
If that's what you'd like to do with your time, yes, ma'am.
Oh, my gosh. What's a plane? This is listed with a heading that he wrote on here, this is what I'll be doing in my
Thank you, ma'am.
I oppose. Thank you.
Paul Speed and then Raymond Petry.
Morning. My name is Paul Speed. I live at four-five-three-seven North Sohei Boulevard in Golden Valley. When I first heard about this, I couldn't believe what I was hearing. I asked myself, why would the people that we trust to plan our community in a sensible, safe, aesthetic, and economically tangible manner allow such a thing to happen? And then I saw that, are we just talking about this one? We're gonna talk about the other?
Are you talking about item eight?
I, I, yeah, I'm good. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to know if there's been an environmental impact statement done on this. Just north of the land, there's a copper mine and a turquoise mine. Besides copper and turquoise coming out of the ground there, there are also minerals such as cyanide, mercury, asbestos, and lead. I don't know how much mountain he's taken out, but if those elements are exposed to the wind, then we're in real trouble. There's also a wash that runs on the east side of that mountain that he wants to take out, and that wash runs from Sohei to the Sacramento Wash in Golden Valley and then into the Colorado River. I'm thinking if this is built, it would be conceivably a terrible thing for our community. Is there anybody who can put this on the screen? I don't know how to do it. Thank you, sir. And as far as the legal matters are concerned, I've done some research on this, and I've come up with something. I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm under the assumption that there is supposed to be, just a minute, please, a Type III permit is required by the FAA to be filled out before a hearing in front of the planning commission.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You done with this?
I have Raymond Petry and Scott Stedrick.
My name is Raymond Petry, forty-five sixty-five North Thurman Drive. My property is across the street from the proposed landing field. When I was a young man, my early twenties, I had the opportunity to take my pilot's license, and I enjoyed it very much. It's a lot of fun. But the first thing they taught me was to take off and to land safely, and to be concerned not only with myself but with the surroundings, to be careful where you were and to pay attention. This landing field is proposed into a canyon. Cannot turn to the right, you'd be smacking into a mountain. It's right there. The only thing they can do is to turn around if there's a problem and fly out over the community, coming in and out over the homes. This is lowering our property value and it's jeopardizing our community. I don't feel that this is the right place for it. It's being, it's going to tear off the top of the mountain next to it, and all that is going to have to be pushed either into the wash or someplace else, and it's destroying a mountain that will take centuries to replace and repair. I oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Scott Cedric, and then I have Nathaniel Maynard next.
Good morning. My name is Scott Streibach, and I live at seventy-nine thirty West Highway sixty-eight out in Golden Valley, and I'm here to support the petitioner for this proposed airstrip. And my background is, pretty much all my life, been aviation. Learned how to fly when I was in my teens, wound up flying helicopters in Vietnam, wound up in the air medical services industry for almost thirty-some years as a fixed-wing pilot. Then I flew for Uncle Sam in Afghanistan for five years and another year in Africa for the Air Force. In addition to being a professional flight instructor with about fifteen thousand hours, so I can tell you I know a little bit about airports. I think the first thing that everybody is forgetting is this is a private airport. A number of the speakers today have alluded to... A number of the speakers today have alluded to requirements, gotta have this, and you gotta have this, environmental impact statements, whatnot. It's on private land, end of story. A gentleman a moment ago referred to having, I believe the phrase he used was a T-3 permit from the FAA. Again, doesn't apply to a private airstrip. So, what I'm trying to do here is kinda play the devil's advocate on some of the pros and some of the cons. One of the individuals earlier mentioned life-saving helicopter. Okay, you've got guardian flight, you've got lifeguard, you've got air methods, those all operate under FAA Regulation Part 135. They are strictly restricted in their operations. They cannot land at a private airport, or, excuse me, a private airstrip.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. I, I support the proposition.
Nathaniel Maynard.
Hi, I'm Nathaniel Maynard, I'm at 4437 North Castle Tank. My property borders the very end of this runway, I'm not 200 yards from the very end of it, landing or taking off, I'm not sure. My family home, my horse corrals, and also a neighbor really closely, we're all very close to the very end of this runway, and that, I'm a little concerned, so I strongly oppose.
Thank you. I have some requests to speak here that say seven or eight. Do you wanna wait to eight, or you wanna wait, you wanna speak now? Okay, and you are? David?
Brent.
Brent. Name and address.
Hello, my name is Brent Green, my address is 2719 Wallop Iav, Kingman, Arizona. I own property off of Sundown in Sohei Estates. Sohei is, it's a wonderful community. We moved there, I grew up in Sohei, okay, we moved there back in the mid-'90s. So I spent my whole life out there, I was homeschooled, and so, I mean, you know, we were just always, you know, doing our thing in Sohei. My oldest son, while we lived there in Sohei, was actually born, you know, with a midwife there in Sohei, like, he is a Sohei OG. I am strongly opposed to the building of the landing strip, not to go over whatever, everything everyone has already gone over, but I think someone's right to their property and with what they wanna do with it, there is a lot of latitude, but as soon as you start infringing upon everybody else's rights and right to safety, there's gotta be a line drawn. There's a lot of stuff that I can't do on, on any of my properties, even though I own them, and so I don't see how this is any different, because the whole community is gonna be footing the risk for this landing strip, and I, I don't see any reward to it. And as the previous gentleman said, the whole notion of, of lifeflight, landing there, I mean, that's kinda thrown out of the water, let alone, I mean, there's plenty of open places where, you know, helicopters can land if they need be. Infrastructure, next to none, as far as law enforcement and/or EMS, emergency response, even though that there is that fire department there in Bakobi, but it's still a fair distance away from where the proposed strip's gonna be. I'm against it. There's plenty of airstrips throughout the community, and, you know, like I said, going back to before what I reiterated, that people should be able to do what they wanna do with their property, as long as it doesn't interfere with those around them. So I oppose.
Thank you, sir.
Do you still wanna speak on item eight? Okay.
Okay, I have a David Harris, you wanna speak on seven or eight?
Or both.
Or both, you actually can speak on both.
My name's David Harris, I live at 4238 West Ranch Road. I just wanna say that when, a few years back when we decided to move there to Sohei, I did a bunch of research, found there's no drag strips, no airstrips, nice, quiet community. The biggest thing that I think that there's a problem with is that the people, some of the people that are for this are not from Sohei. It's not gonna affect them. I do believe that people should be able to do what they want with their properties, but when it affects so many other people, I think that kinda goes out the window. Where the airstrip is going to be, this mountain is gonna have to be taken down, I, I'm just a guess, but at least 100 feet. You're gonna be redoing the whole... Is there a problem? No? There's, there's a lot of dirt work that's gonna have to be done. It's gonna change this whole area out there. There's two homes directly in the path of this, 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 this one plane supposedly, for now. But once that is, if it is approved, yeah, it's a personal airstrip, but they're still gonna have to get recommendations or, or from the county how much dirt they can move, when they can move it, impacts of all of that. So, I strongly, strongly oppose this.
Thank you, sir.
Are you coming back for number eight?
No. No, it's fine.
Okay.
I have a Dawn Harris and a Farilla Newsen.
Hi, I'm Dawn Harris, I live at 4238 West Ranch Road in Sohei, very close to where this is proposed. So I am, I wrote this concerning the proposed special use permit for an airstrip zoning change in Sohei community. Personally, I am completely opposed to this proposition for numerous reasons. I have many questions about how it would directly and indirectly affect my property, property value, the environment, and even the airspace. One of my biggest concerns is the safety of all of us living in the area. We live in a canyon with unpredictable high winds and flooding due to heavy rainfall and monsoons. I've completed research about plane crashes, and just in Arizona in the last two years, there have been 99 accidents. Many of these reported accidents were at small airstrips and had fatalities. There are homes a few hundred feet from this proposed airstrip. It seems likely at some point this could be a very dangerous situation. Even though the applicant's son has expressed that it will be primarily used by himself twice a week, I think we would be naive to think that he wouldn't have other comrades accessing it as well. Since the out-of-state property owner is seeking to rezone his adjacent property, and the fact that he also owns 18 parcels around Mojave County, I think it is safe to assume they have future plans for development of our neighborhood. After speaking with my neighbors, another issue we have is the duration and time and noise created from construction and maintenance of clearing and leveling off the top of a mountain. Not only would hundreds of us have to tolerate planes flying in and out, we would be subjected for a lengthy amount of time listening to bulldozers, heavy equipment, compacting of the earth, and possible rock crushing. The applicant should also be required to move the significant amount of dirt and debris this would create. This project would cause destruction of our natural desert landscape right-of-way roads because it goes through one of those.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I speak on the seven and eight?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you can.
Four minutes for the, sort of, the seven and eight, or?
Well, you get...
More than two?
You get two here and two there.
Okay. Good morning, my name, Madam Chairman and all members, my name is Fenella Houston. I've lived in Sohei for 19 years, and this proposed airstrip is on land adjacent to ours. I know that planning and zoning does not take into account the topography of a project, but in this case, the land itself is the key to understand the problems and dangers of this proposed project and why it should not be approved, so I would like to show you photos so you can better understand. As you can see, this, this, let me put my... No, I'm all in reverse, I'm sorry about this. So this is 93, and as you can see, this is the back of the mountain range, this is an aerial view. So you can see that flying in, and you, I will show you photos later, that this is, this is canyon, and this is basically a box canyon, and the only way to come in is to fly over here, this is the proposed airstrip, and to fly out again. This photo is taken from the flat, as you can see, 93 is here, at the bottom, this is the road along, this is the proposed airstrip. Here you have the homes, the residential homes, all the way over here, here you have this, this box canyon, so the plane will have to fly over residential homes, out of residential homes, crashing possibly into mountains and possibly residential homes. Here I have the elevation. The elevation down here is about 3,400 feet, this is Gilli's garage, whatever, home, place here, 3,500 feet. You'll see that the mountain, this is the airstrip, the airstrip, the proposed airstrip is a mountain that is 120 feet high, these are all Google Earth photos, can I continue?
Go ahead.
128 feet high, and these are approximately 1,000 feet higher. So, he has to come in, and he's got, this is another picture of the airstrip, you can see the height, the 128 feet, this is a closer up of the airstrip, and these are, I'm doing quickly, sorry, these are pictures of residential homes with this proposed land, piece of land that he is talking about leveling, and as you can see, the homes are very, very close to this piece of land. This is a close-up of the piece of land, a closer, close-up of the piece of land, this is the piece of land that Mr. Maynard was talking about, that his property was adjacent, and that he was at the bottom of this airstrip, this is the bottom of the airstrip, this is his land, and this is the, the applicant's land.
Okay, ma'am.
So if I may go to the next part, may I?
You wanna talk on eight?
Yes.
Well, let's wait until we, we have eight.
Okay, it's not very long, but I'm happy to talk on eight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm gonna close the, the public hearing. No, still, I still have some more? Okay, I still have more people who wanna speak on seven and eight. Don't do that. I have Gary Krishner.
I'm chairman, I'd like to wait till number eight.
Okay, and I have Colleen.
Yeah.
Do you wanna speak on seven and eight, or seven?
Seven.
Okay, come on up to the podium. I also have Jack Homer.
Your...
And do you wanna speak now?
Your pardon?
You wanna speak now, or do you wanna speak?
I'd be delighted to speak now, thank you.
Madam Chair and Honorable Members of the Commission, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm Jack Hummel, I live at 3275 West Chia Drive in Sohei Estates. I've lived there for 25 years. And to preface a bit of why I'm here, and to give you an idea of what I know I'm talking about, I'm 84 years old, spent 30-odd years in the aviation industry, I know how airplanes fly and how they don't, what affects them negatively and positively. This airstrip is being proposed in an area that is subject to erratic high winds, it changes direction any minute. That changing of direction to an airplane can kill it, it can just kill a lift and drop it on the ground like a rock. I like the idea that somebody wants to develop something and make money out of it, God bless them, but this is not the place to do it. I think this is dangerous, I think it's foolhardy, and this is going to be, among other things, a one-way airstrip, a one-way in and one-way out. If the person tries to fly toward the mountains and has air trouble, or engine trouble, rather, he's gonna try and left or right and right into a mountain. It's a box canyon, as was mentioned earlier. And another thing there is flood control, it's been talked about quite a bit here lately, about the earth movement, where it's gonna go, what's gonna happen to it. That is, I think, I'm guessing 50,000 or 60,000 yards of dirt. It's going to be a hideous mess in the area, affecting both erosion and deposition of that same soil. And the property value losses to the community, I think, are going to be hideous. I recommend strongly that you vote against this airstrip approval. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you, sir. Colleen.
Hi, my name is Colleen Holbrook, I live at 4310 West Ranch Road. I live in the canyon, the box canyon. I love my home up in there, it's, it's a beautiful canyon. I am in fear for myself or my fellow neighbors having a plane or a helicopter crashing into our homes, destroying us as a community. I am terrified of such an accident. If, at that worst time, for fires, then what? What happens to, if we get, if we can't get out of there? I only have one way in and one way out, and the wash is below me, and it's more than 10 feet deep. I can't get out of there if my road's closed off. We've had our roads wash off to where we've had three feet from the edge drop right into the wash. Something else, we have high winds in this canyon, and living up there, I feel like I'm back living underneath O'Hare Airport. I had airplanes going over me every five minutes. I could wave, I could read the numbers on the airplane. I left Chicago for a reason, amongst other things. Something that I don't think anybody's listened to or even thought about is, we have veterans that live in our residential area, residential area. What about those with PTSD? I come from a huge military family. My mother served 23 years in the US Army, and my daughter, at 27, is serving the United States Air Force in Fort Meade, Maryland. What am I gonna have her come to if all of what I have worked so hard for is destroyed? What about autistic children, autistic adults? Have you thought about the veterans, and when they, they're here in the planes and everything?
Thank you, ma'am.
I oppose it. I don't want it.
Okay.
Stay at the...
I believe that's all of the people who have requested to speak on item seven, so I am going to close the public hearing. And does any commissioner have anything, any questions?
Madam Chair, I believe the applicant still wanted to present at the end.
Okay, if the applicant would come back up to the podium.
Good afternoon, Gillian Janzak, 3345 East Josiah Drive, Golden Valley, Arizona. There seems to be a grand miscommunication with what my plans are with this property. I have a passion for flying airplanes and wish to be able to land small, single-engine aircraft on my property. There is a huge concern of the amount of traffic that will be involved. The additional traffic would be, every once in a while, I would take off or land off my own property. As everybody else mentioned, the winds are constant. Pilots hate wind. If there's erratic wind, we don't take off, or we don't land, or we divert. So, I understand what they're saying, but I don't really see that as an issue. As far as future construction, everybody thinks I wanna do a fly-in community, I have a dream of building a house on the edge of the mountain with a small dirt airstrip behind Once again, it's not a public airport, this is a rough terrain rudimentary landing strip. The truth is, is with the elevation of the airstrip, there's very few residents that would even see the surface of the airstrip. I wouldn't be doing any night landings, there wouldn't be any lights, there would be no light pollution, no fuel sales, no business, no fuel storage. If I need fuel, you go to Kingman, or you go to Bullhead, or you go anywhere else. I do not represent any corporate interest, and I'm just trying to live free and use my property with, you know, whatever rights we have. With that being said, if...
Thank you, sir. I, Commissioner...
Because it feels like, feels like a fairly narrow...
It's, it's a fair, fairly narrow and small operation that I consider that, that hill actually kind of goes like this. And so, I mean, in my opinion, it wouldn't be a huge, I mean, I'm not trying to make a perfectly level, beautiful, smooth surface, you know? It's, it's kind of a rudimentary, rough, backcountry sort of deal that you would find on, on any ranch that potentially had an airstrip. So, to answer your question, how, how would I plan to move dirt? I mean, there's already an existing road that runs the whole top of that little mountain that's there. I call it a mountain, but it's a hill. And to me, yeah, there's some low spots and some high spots, but it would be a matter of smoothing it out and pushing a little dirt around. I mean, little lot, I mean, I, I don't know how to define a little or a lot, you know? I'm not going to use a shovel.
Sure, I understand that. So, and then, you know, the, the other concern that I have, you know, you've got, there are property owners below you and around you, you know, with any kind of, and I agree that you have the right to use your property how you will, to an extent, but other people do too.
Of course.
And so, do you plan on getting an evasion easement for the people below you or around you? Because I know in a normal airport, you have to do that, perhaps this one you don't, but here you are impacting other people with, with your, your traffic.
Yeah, and to be honest, you asked me if I was going to get what kind of permit? I don't even know what that is.
Well, it's evasion easement, so it's, it's the approach, landing zones, and noise control issues that, that are inherent with airport traffic.
Yeah, I mean, I would...
Now, this is not an airport, so, so I agree with that, but all of, all of the downstream and upstream owners have expressed concern about the noise and the danger, potential danger.
Right. And, and so, what's the question?
So, to have, so do you plan on getting some kind of an easement or some kind of a, some kind of a statement from them that they're, you're okay, they're okay with you flying your aircraft and landing in that?
I, I don't, yeah, I don't think I'm going to get any more support from any of my neighbors that I already have. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Any other questions?
What do you fly?
Cessna one-seventy-two, or a one-seventy, or a mall M-five, small planes that are fifteen, sixteen-hundred pounds, right around there, and their gross weight, which is their maximum weight.
Like roughly twelve to fifteen-hundred feet for landing distance?
Some of these planes will do it in three or four hundred feet.
Okay.
And same with takeoff.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion. I make a motion that we deny item number seven.
I second that motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Gillette, seconded by Commissioner Bradshaw. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Item number eight, Amy Petzey.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County general plan from a rural development area land use designation to a suburban development area land use designation and a rezone from an ROA five-A, single-family residential manufactured homes prohibited, limited animal privileges, five-acre minimum lot size zone to an ROA one-A, single-family residential manufactured homes prohibited, limited animal privileges, one-acre minimum lot size zone for Assessor's Parcel Number three-three-zero-two-eight-two-zero-six to allow for a minor land division in the Sohi vicinity. Staff has received two petitions of opposition, one letter of concern, and four letters of support. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Those people who are leaving, please be quiet. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? And do you wish to speak?
Yes.
You want to just answer questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. And we do have some other people who want to speak on this, so I'll be calling you up and in twos. Gary Krishner and Carol Campbell will be in waiting.
My name is Gary Krishner. I live at thirty-four twenty-eight Mountain Drive in the Sohi subdivision, and I'd like to oppose, strongly oppose, this land change. As a lot of the reasons we discussed earlier in the, and also the previous with Val, Vista out there, we all moved out to Sohi for the, the open range. We don't want the fences, we don't want a high-impact area. We care and love for our environment that's out there with the deer and the stuff, and I feel that we already have the, just the right balance of our, our zone out there to keep it, keep it rural, is what we're looking for, what we invested in. In that keeping rural, again, we've, we've made improvements out there. We have paved roads, we have a wonderful community, we have a tight-knit relationship with our neighbors, and to further bring in another subdivision, we have, as I brought up previously in my opposition to seven, we have a water issue out there. We're, we're struggling to maintain the, the current capacity. In order to change and bring down and add more micro-communities or to change our rural zoning, we've not asked for that, the neighbors here, and, and I believe a lot of our neighbors here that have spoke on the number seven are going to oppose this as, with the same forethought. So, with that, commissioners, thank you for your, your time today, and I urge you to deny this zone change. It's not from the neighborhood, it's from an outside source. The neighbors here are Sohi, we want to kind of preserve our lifestyle that we've all invested, we are currently enjoying with the current zoning structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Carol Campbell, and I have Farina Newsom waiting.
Hi, Carol Campbell, three-three-five-five West Smith Drive in Sohi. I don't have a lot to say about this. I don't really have a problem with them going from five acres to one acre. I have a problem with changing the general plan and making this suburban. I don't understand why that's necessary. Again, like the gentleman said, our water is an issue, and I also have one comment related to, kind of to this, is that putting items under Kingman that are actually Golden Valley makes it look like you're trying to hide something. Because if I look in an agenda, I would look at Golden Valley, I wouldn't particularly care about Kingman. So, just a comment for the future, maybe you might want to change that.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a free...
Fenella.
Fenella, thank you, and...
Sorry, I should learn to spell.
And we have Colleen standing, waiting.
Fenella Houston, forty-seven oh-four North Thurman in Sohi. I just wanted to add, sorry, I hadn't added before, that we also, also collected over a hundred signatures of residents in Sohi that opposed both of these proposals. Now, we come to proposal zoning change from a split, to split a five-acre parcel into four separate parcels. This proposal asks many more questions than it provides answers, and looking at these two proposals together, I think we are seeing just the tip of the iceberg. So, what will these one-and-a-half-acre lots be for? Why does he want to change the zoning? What is his ultimate plan? Is he proposing to sell these lots for people to build homes? Because if so, no one would want to live at the bottom of a dusty airstrip unless they had access to that airstrip. So, following this train of thought, we can conjecture that this would most likely be the beginning of an airpark. So, the question I'd like to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission, and later the Board of Supervisors, is are you willing to take responsibility for the accidents and fires that could occur from this project to the community by approving the zoning changes and for the airstrip? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Jack Homer.
Madam Chair, that item has been covered before, I can just be quiet.
Okay, thank you. And Colleen, I assume feels the same way. Okay.
Madam Chairman, Paul Speed, I would like to speak on both of those on my application.
Okay, come up to the podium. Name and address.
Paul Speed, four-five-three-seven North Sohi Boulevard in Golden Valley. I'm a retired builder and developer. I know exactly what's going to happen out there if you change the zoning. You're going to have over a hundred houses sitting there with access to a private airstrip. That's my opinion. The man talks about his ranch with his private airstrip, then why do you want to change zoning? The ranch isn't thirty-six acres, it's a hundred and forty-four acres, in my opinion. There's problems out there. How much, how much can Ranch Road take? It's a dirt road, it's non-maintained, the garbage man won't go to the end of it, the school bus won't go to the end of it, and that's the access. Also, if it's changed to suburban, commercial uses can be brought in if they meet with other infrastructure, like an airport. I strongly oppose any development of that, any change in zoning of that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions.
I think the applicant was interested in speaking.
Well, he can come back up if you have a question.
I do have a question for the applicant, but...
Would the applicant please return to the podium? State your name and address.
Gillian Janzak, thirty-three forty-five East Josiah Drive, Golden Valley.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Thank you, Chairperson Gillette. So, what is, is, so I see that there's a road bisecting the actual parcel, so tell me kind of what your intent is, are you, is your intent to build five separate parcels?
No, my intent would be to split it probably once or twice, depending, it's kind of a small, strangely shaped angled property, but that piece of dirt that's actually across the road, to me, is kind of useless, and if it was its own property, I think it would be more useful. Initially, the main reason that I even started thinking about splitting it is because I actually do want to put a road at the bottom of it that gives me access to the hill, which would have been my proposed runway. Or if I build a house on top of that mountain in the future, I want to have a road that kind of goes straight across the bottom, so the west portion of that property.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Hubbard?
You say it's manufactured homes. You're talking about trailers, pulling out trailers out there, pull the wheels off, and that's it?
I thought it was for stick-built homes that I was rezoning it for.
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Hubbard?
Residential manufactured.
Well...
What are we talking here? Are we talking about double-wide trailers, this, that, and the other?
If it's, if it's residential manufactured, it would, to me, it would be either stick, stick homes or manufactured that come on a trailer that ninety percent of this county seems like it's built out of. Not, not camp trailers, but mobile homes that they permanently install.
And then, the, some of the residents are concerned about the water issues and sanitation?
Yeah, I mean, if they're one-acre properties, I would imagine putting in a septic system for them. And as far as the water issue, yeah, there's, Sohi leases a well from Kingman, and, and that is an old well, and so there are concerns that, I don't know, we're always careful with the water in Sohi, so could it be potential? Then I'm not even in the Sohi Water District? I'm not sure, because Sohi Water District never calls me back, or it takes like a year for them to call me back. So, I, I, I'm not able to give that information. They could potentially become water haul properties, but that seems like it's a very common thing in Mojave County.
What's the, a limited, limited animals? What are we talking about?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to clarify a little bit, and Commissioner Hubbard, so the zoning, this is a zoning district within our zoning ordinance, is the single-family residential manufactured homes prohibited, so they cannot have manufactured homes. That's what it currently is right now as well. We're just looking to lower the minimum lot size. So, they, they cannot have manufactured homes, and with the zoning change, it would still not allow for the, the manufactured homes, it'd have to be a stick-built. And then, the limited animal privileges refers to how many animals they could have, similar to an agricultural residential zone, but they're limited on how many you can have, where in the agricultural residential zone, it's not limited.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'm going to call for a motion.
I make a motion, approve number eight per staff recommendations.
I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a second, I mean, I have a, a motion by Commissioner Hassett, seconded by Commissioner Bradshaw. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Yeah. Two, but that passes. So, this, this goes up to the, to the supervisors. Item number nine, staff report by Peggy Clements.
Item nine is an evaluation of a request for a rescission of BOS Resolutions twenty-eleven-one-two-one and twenty-thirteen-one-two-eight to remove the EW, Energy Wind Overlay Zone from an AR thirty-six-A, Agricultural Residential, thirty-six-acre Minimum Lot Size Zone.
Excuse me, though, please be quiet while you're exiting. Go ahead.
For Assessor's Parcel Number two-zero-six-one-zero-zero-one-nine, for not meeting the conditions of approval in the Kingman vicinity, staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak?
The county is the applicant on this one.
We have no one who's requested to speak on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we...
Motion to rescind.
Can I second that motion?
Was that Martin?
Mm-hmm.
And she made a motion to...
To rescind.
Rescind.
Okay. Bradshaw. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. It's quiet in here now. Item number ten, staff report by Alex Mullen.
Item ten is an evaluation of a request for a rescission of BOS Resolutions two-zero-zero-seven-five-three-five-two-zero-zero-eight-two-five-five-and-two-zero-zero-eight-three-two-five to revert the property back to an AR-ten-A, Agricultural Residential, ten-acre Minimum Lot Size Zone for Assessor's Parcel Numbers three-one-zero-two-seven-zero-one-seven-three-one-zero-two-eight-zero-one-three-zero-one-nine-zero-two-zero-and-zero-two-one-three-one-zero-three-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-four-zero-zero-six-zero-zero-nine-zero-one-zero-zero-one-one-and-zero-one-two-and-three-one-zero-one-five-zero-one-six-zero-one-eight-zero-two-one-zero-two-two-and-zero-two-seven-through-zero-three-zero due to the expiration of the development agreement and for not meeting the conditions of approval in the Kingman vicinity. of approval in the Kingman vicinity. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak? There's only three people. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the commissioners have any questions about this. Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion.
I move that we approve the recension of these...
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Bradshaw, seconded by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Item number 21 is commissioners' comments. Does anyone have anything that they would like to bring before the commission?
I do for staff.
Go ahead, Commissioner Martin.
This is for next month's meeting. If staff has any suggestions that our committee can do on, in regards to all these RVs we have parked on county land that are not moving and have no septic or water facilities, especially in the Havasu Heights area, if staff can suggest any options that we may have to vote on or send up to the Board of Supervisors?
Chairman Gillette, Commissioner Martin, if I could just get maybe a little bit of clarification on that, are you looking at property owned by the county or private land within the county?
Yes.
Are we talking federal land?
Federal.
Well, I would say both.
Okay.
Especially in the Havasu Heights area, we have a large amount of RVs parked on county land. They're not moving per code, and nobody's enforcing it. They don't have... They're not moving to go and dump their septic, whatever they're supposed to be dumping. They're just parked.
So Chairman Gillette, if I may, Commissioner Martin, I know we've had... This is an issue, I think, that comes up pretty frequently in the area. Depending on where those RVs are located, if they are on actual county property, that would be something that the county would enforce and have them remove those. That'd be trespassing, and we'd have them trespassed off. If it's private land, and they're parking RVs on private land, that is also something that we would address. Basically, we could go through a zoning violation and require them to either get a temporary RV permit, or, you know, they'd need to vacate the property. A lot of times, unfortunately, what we see in that area is they are parking on BLM land. And that's really something that is taken up with BLM, and the county doesn't have a lot of jurisdiction, doesn't have any jurisdiction to be able to regulate what's done on BLM land. That would be through BLM. But if you have, if you could send me over some specific locations, we'd be happy to look into it and let you know what we can do, if anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Great job.
I'm going to do item number 22, which is called to the public.
So we did have a request for a call to the public by Mr. Bob Hooker, but I don't see him here at this time, so unless someone else wants to speak.
Okay, since we don't have anyone wanting to speak at the call to the public, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Melanie Markin is now exiting.